Okay, it is 6:30. We'll call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone. If you will stand and join me in the pledge.
I'm in the weird between tables. Our council has the agenda before them. Are there any changes or motion that we approve it?
I'd like to add an item to is item H employee bonus idea.
I'd like to add Adam item I to discuss ARPA funds. I'd like to also add an item, actually two items. I'd like to add item J dependent care coverage and K pick new shelter capital fund discussion.
We're in here enjoying each other's company.
We've learned a lot.
I'm surprised you could hear us.
Okay, we are back. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt? I thought we did that in here. Did we do that in there?
We have a.
I'll do it again. Motion to reenter open session.
Second.
Oh, those in favor? Regular agenda. Sorry to keep you waiting. Carl Schaal has our financial report for fiscal year 2021, 2020, 2021. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
How are you? Good. Happy Thanksgiving to you. You have a copy of the audit report in front of you. We've completed the audit as is required under state law. Every year you must be audited in accordance with U.S. governmental accounting principles and and audit procedures, and we have performed that audit. Our report is contained at the beginning. And we're issuing a clean opinion, meaning that your financial statements contained in this document fairly present your financial condition as of the year that ended June 30, 2021. And for the year that happened, that ended on June 30, 2021. Let's just highlight a couple of the things that I want to mention to you. First, turn to the page that is exhibit number five. Exhibit numbers are up at the top of the page. It is page number nine. This represents the general fund, the revenue and the expenses of the year. So let's just, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. You know, a year ago when COVID began, there were some dire words saying there's not going to be any sales tax revenue coming out to municipal governments. And I'm very happy to say that did not happen. You know, the League of Municipalities was saying, well, maybe a 25% drop. And just compare the unrestricted intergovernmental revenue. There's revenue number two. We were budgeting 965,000 and your actual amount was 1.6 million. So sales tax revenue just started coming in and it just kept coming in. There was never a drop. And and it continues to be strong in the year that you're now in. So I'm grateful for for the town to be able to have that good support of the sales revenue continued to happen. The report shows your overall net change and fund balance, which is down. The report shows your overall net change and fund balance, which is down at the bottom of the actual amounts. That is the amount that will be going into your fund balance, your profit for the year. That is a good, strong amount. A year ago, you spent some money paying off the long-term debt. And so you actually spent more than you received, as was your plan. But this year you have recovered that amount and put some more into into your fund balance reserve. I also like to look at your property taxes, go all the way to the back of the page number 40. And it's really nice to see the percentage collected. And orally, it's 99.24% overall. I'd say that's pretty good. So, thank you. It's not easy to collect taxes all the time, but Mills River has a very good collection rate. And keep up the good work. It makes covering your expenses much better when you're collecting that. And go back one page to the number 39. And it's really neat to see, you know, your overall additions to the budget that would be your levy was 2.8 million almost. And by the end of the year, you had collected all but $21,000 of that, which is a that's great. Mills River taxpayers pay their taxes. One of the things that local government auditors must do is to disclose to you this year if we had any particular difficulties or any problems with your financial situation. And I am pleased to say I had none. So if there and this is something you can use going forward, if a local government has had a particular problem that has come up, it has to be mentioned in a public meeting at the time the audit is presented. That is now a requirement that all auditors get to comply with. I was just reading a memo from the State Treasurer's Office and they said, this is not a suggestion. This is a requirement. So I went down through the list and made sure there was nothing that I need to disclose to you tonight of a negative nature. So I appreciate the opportunity of working with Sue and Patty and Daniel and Orlie and Nicole and the whole team really appreciate working with them. They're providing us the information that we need on a timely basis. Thank you for the opportunity of serving you, and I wish you a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you as always, Mr. Shaw. Any questions?
Thank you, Rock.
Item two on the agenda is to set the public hearing for text amendment TXT 21-05, conditional zoning for the January 13th meeting. And I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? I. Any opposed? All right, now we have a public hearing for text amendment TXT 21-07, request for text amendment. So I will make a motion that we enter into public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? I.
Bye.
Who's presenting? Michael.
So, quick background, earlier this year, council directed staff to modify the process for citizen-initiated text amendment or Mills River property owner initiated text amendments to include a pre-application meeting with council. We brought this before the planning board, which recommended it for approval. And I just wanted to state before I get further, and we have properly noticed this hearing with public notices appearing, the Hendersonville lightning on November 3rd and 10th. Um, so basically, we reviewed I, when I went through the language, I reviewed the entire section to also correct errors and inconsistencies with state land use law, chapter 160D, modified language for clarity. And then all recommended changes are tracked in the redlined zoning ordinance excerpt that's attached as attachment A. As I said, planning board considered this on September 7th, recommended approval. And I did just want to go through the ordinance and highlight a few of the larger changes that address council's concerns. So on line 23 is the first mention, basically I split out the zoning text amendment from the zoning map amendment, so we can include the separate process. And that if one or more owners of property within town limits and upon some feedback from council, I also include any designated owners, agent, or legal counsel representing a property owner that initiates the text amendment must petition town council to move forward with the amendment process. So that language is there. Line 27 specifically states the pre-application conferences required. And then moving on to line 72, I did include a section about downzoning and limitations on downzoning. That's just something spelled out in chapter 160D, state land use law. That really should be included in the ordinance. So that's just an addition. And moving on to line 118, I made a correction here. The ordinance had already stated that basically you can't reapply for a zoning or map text amendment that was denied in the preceding 12 months. I've gotten questions from some people about when that 12 months starts. So I just said it's beginning from the date of town council's decision of denial. So that was an addition I also made. And then further down on that page, 124 through 136, there was an error, well, just an inconsistency with state land use law that the planning board could have up to 45 days for a consideration of an item that is now 30 days in state land use law. So if planning board doesn't take action after for a zoning text amendment or map amendment within 30 days, council can take it up. So that correction was made. And that's all I wanted to highlight. Happy to take any other questions. Your options are obviously to approve the text amendment, approve of modifications table or tonight.
So, two, two questions. If a town council member initiates this, does it still have to go through this process?
No, it's specifically for property owners or owners, agents representing property owners.
So my question number two is this, is that is there a fee associated with the property owner bringing to town council holiday pre?
Pre-application meeting. No, so I spell out, I think it's in lines 44 through 47. I basically say, once council directs them to proceed, they then submit a formal application to me with the fee. So in order for someone to do a pre-application conference with council, they would coordinate that with me, but I wouldn't require a formal application or a fee for that.
I'm good with this. I think Michael hit it. I think you hit it right on the head with what we were looking for on this. I'll make a motion. We accept these the modification for the text amendment and move forward.
So we've got to, we've got to make the motion out of the public hearing. So we've got to discuss, discuss. Any other questions for council?
No, I'm happy with this.
Is there anyone else here in the public to have public comment on this text amendment? Text amendment? All right, is there motion to close public hearing?
I make a motion to close public hearing. Second.
All those in favor? Now I can go ready.
I'll make a motion. We accept this 21-07 modification for their text amendments.
Is that enough? Do we have to supply this statement of consistency?
In a separate motion.
In a separate motion.
Right. So we have a motion. I'll second.
Thanks.
All those in favor of adopting the text amendment? I.
I.
I. Any opposed? So who has the statement of consistency?
So I'll make a motion. We adopt the statement of consistency with the comprehensive plan for TXT 21-07, specifically with respect to objective 1.4 and objective 1.5. Is that enough, Daniel? I'll second.
All those in favor? I. Item D, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Charter and Membership.
Good evening, council. This item, as well as the next one, refer to some conversations that we've been having over the last several months regarding the town's various boards and committees, and specifically setting up charters and rules of procedure for each one. To date, we've completed the planning board charter, the board of adjustment charter. And those are very much based on state statute. There's not a whole lot of flexibility in those particular boards. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Charter and Rules of Procedure are in front of you. We have identified a couple of typos in spelling. Otherwise, these are very straightforward, plays out the purpose of the committee, memberships, their terms of service, the number of people on the board, notice of meetings, even though these are, this is an advisory committee, it still has to comply with the open meetings law with public notice and minute taking and all those sorts of things. All that is laid out in here. Information about the chair, when they're elected, how long they serve. There's a reference to Robert's Rules of Order for just that, for reference. That's all I have as far as the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Nicole, this was your committee. Did you have any?
Nicole, it occurs to me that one of the things that we've been doing both inside the park and we've had plans to build some walking trails and multi-use paths outside the park. So this town is now basically in the business of building trails. I wonder if you would prefer that the name of the committee reflect that.
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable request. I think a lot of other towns do include greenways as part of their Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. I know we're going through the bicycle and pedestrian plan. And so once that that plan is complete, some of that does fall under planning, but of course, a lot of that is recreation based. So I think it's very reasonable to include that guidance to our Parks Committee to to think, have that in their brains as well as not just parks, recreation, but greenways as well.
I would think it would be empowering to the people on the on the committee itself, you know, to have that extra responsibility, knowing that that's that's part of their purview. Is there a name that that you would prefer? I mean, I'm just wondering if there's something that's sort of standard that other communities use.
Um, off the top of my head, no. Parks, Recreation, Greenways.
Okay.
Parks, Recreation, Greenways. It's a lot of letters.
It's a mouthful.
Yeah.
Maybe Parks Trails and Recreation, something I'm thinking.
Parks Trails.
Is there any appetite from council? Okay, do we need a motion? Or do we make a motion that we rename the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the Parks Trails and Recreation Advisory Committee?
I'll second. All those in favor of renaming? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? And I will make a motion that we adopt the Charter and Rules of Procedure for newly named committee.
And I will second.
All those in favor?
I.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Too long. Item E.
Do we need to reappoint? Members? What are we going to do that?
To reappoint members, we short on.
You can do that now or you're address it under item F?
Specifically.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Item E, the Charter for the Agriculture Advisory Committee.
Very similar to the previous item on your agenda. This is the Charter and Rules of Procedure for the Agriculture Advisory Committee. Again, sets out the purpose and the name of the group, membership, terms of service, so on and so forth. This committee is specifically regarding the preservation of agriculture. So that's called out in here as well as the ordinance protecting farmland. And again, it's very similar to the previous document. I've been answering any questions.
Sherry? On, on section three of the attendance, I just want to make sure that I'm going to say May through September, that the farmers may not be able to come.
Well, it says the chairperson may give a member an exception.
Zed, you may not have any farmers here. So I just want to make sure that there's language in here that protects the farmers that have to get out at six o'clock in the morning. They can't stop at eight or nine o'clock for a meeting.
How often do you all have to cancel that just because everybody's working?
Tomorrow's meeting is the first meeting since August.
Because it was harvests and everybody.
Yeah, pretty, pretty much. They canceled the whole meeting when they, when they need to. We very rarely don't have a quorum. Put it that way.
So I have a clarification question. I know on the other committees, and this one's worded the same way. You have to be a resident of the town. We passed that, but this committee doesn't, we don't provide that exception to the rules.
We have had trouble getting, so there's farmers that don't live in the town.
But there's no exception. There's nothing that, right, it's not in here.
Sorry. What, what you adopted was that the residency requirement was for the board of adjustment and the planning board.
There's a typo in article five. I guess you guys might be aware of that.
That's, that's one of the couple of identified. Thank you. Microsoft Word does not spell check capitalized words in case you're wondering.
So I'll make a motion. We approve the Agriculture Advisor Committee Charter. I will second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now, item F, the Board of Adjustment Alternates, Parks, Trails and Recreation Advisory Committee Vacancy, Consideration of Appointments.
So as you may remember from our last discussion, the Board of Adjustment has five regular members. There are two vacancies in the alternate positions. We did reach out to the planning board and ask if any of those folks are willing to serve, and Jim Foster, as well as Jeff Moore from the planning board have offered their services. I believe you have an application, Dennis Grass as well, who has applied in the past. So those are your, the three folks, and it would be great to have a full, full board.
I think Jeff Moore has a lot of experience that he could bring to that. I would be in favor of appointing him myself.
I would as well.
Would it be possible to defer these appointments to the new council?
It's the council's pleasure.
No, we are, Board of Adjustment will be hearing a variance on December 14th. And we are only going to have four members. And it takes four yeses in order for that to pass.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff Moore.
I'll second that. I think Randy beat me to it.
All those in favor of Jeff Moore filling one of the board of adjustment positions? Say aye. Any opposed?
And that would be the first alternate?
Whatever, the next one.
Since we have applicants, maybe we should go ahead and fill that second. Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Jim Foster to the second alternate position on the Board of Adjustments.
I'll second that. All those in favor of Jim Foster as second alternate? Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, what was your, your Parks and Trails Recreation?
Parks and Recreation still hasn't a vacancy if you desire to fill it.
When's your next meeting?
November thirtieth.
I'm fine with waiting, it doesn't matter to me.
You're not short, you're not in danger of not having a quorum?
No, we have six members and very well attended, so.
Let's get down. Okay, I'll get moving on.
So no action on that?
No action on that, thank you. Okay, item G on the agenda is the Rear Walking Trail Repair.
All right, as you all probably remember, in August of this past year, we had a very substantial flood, or a tropical storm Fred came through, and it damaged about a hundred and fifty feet of our rear, rear walking trail. You know, we see literally hundreds of folks a day walking out there, and we were able to temporary reroute and pack it with gravel, but we are hoping to get that, you know, fixed as soon as we can. We've worked with the engineers to get a preliminary study done, and their suggestion is that we basically move the trail over about forty-five feet, so we don't run into, you know, the next big storm, even with our riverbank restoration project. If we can move our path over, it's going to sustain a lot more flooding for many more years to come. So between working with our engineers for the Riverbank Project and working with WGLA Engineering for the town, they have come up with a preliminary design and estimate, which I have in your packets. So to repair, the estimate is forty-two thousand dollars to, that includes the cost of repair work and engineering fee, and does include a twenty percent contingency. So what we would like to do is get your go-ahead to be able to start this process, because what we would, we would really like, once our riverbank project is done, to minimize the amount of time that this trail is down, that we can immediately move into fixing our trail, once the, the other project's complete. So with that, I'll take questions, but what we're asking for today is approval of funds and permission to sign contracts, so we can go ahead and, and get this work planned.
So according to your map here, it looks like the new trail would be completely parallel to the, to the bend in the river.
Right, it would just move it, instead of getting close to the river like it was before, it would just kind of follow the pattern of the river, just move it over farther away.
That seems to make a lot of sense to me.
And that, that bend is where the big reventment, I don't know if you remember the, the design, and it'll actually give them more room to build a stronger, bigger reventment, if we can create a bigger buffer between the walking trail and the river.
So it was the, was it the engineer's opinion that this would decrease the likelihood of us having another catastrophic flood damage to, to the walking trail?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yeah.
So any schedule on when the riverbank restoration?
Yeah, so we'll, we have our pre-construction meeting the first week in December. They won't begin to, before the holidays, so January third is when they'll begin construction on the Riverbank Project. They, per our contract, they have to be done by March first, and then hopefully, we'd be able to roll right in to get our, our greenway done. The big question there is, because you're doing asphalt, is we of course have to wait for, for the good, good weather, so. But we want to be ready, so we can get it open for the public as soon as possible.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we allocate the funds for the trail repair work, and that we authorize the town manager signing and all documents related to the project not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars.
I'll second. All those in favor of authorizing the repair project? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now it's for our extra items. Item H was, Randy wanted to speak about employee bonuses.
Yeah, you know, the last two years have been with all the Corona stuff and everything going on, I think the staff, we've not closed Town Hall at all. It's been open to the public, and most importantly, the park has been open for people to enjoy the whole time. And I would like to, as a board, to recognize this hard work and to to provide Daniel with money to give the employees a nice Christmas bonus this year. So. You need a motion.
We would need an amount in a motion, please.
I will make a motion that we provide Daniel fifteen thousand dollars to provide bonuses for the town employees this year, with the exception of this board. And I'm going, I will make the motion to leave it up to Daniel.
Okay.
Have a, have a a lot.
All those in favor of fifteen thousand dollars allocated to employee bonuses? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item I, the American Rescue Plan Act Funds.
That's me. So I asked for this item to be added to the agenda, basically to recognize the frontline workers in our community. Part of the ARPA legislation allows for premium pay to essential workers, part of that sector being the public safety sector. What I would like to do is that, you know, I would like to allocate some of those monies to the Mills River Fire Department, because I feel like these are the people who've been out in the community over the last two years, who have, didn't have a choice in whether or not they wanted to respond to this pandemic. These are the people who are volunteers and paid staff, who go out in the community and serve our community well, they leave their families. Even if they were responding to a car wreck, they had to take a risk of whether or not the person in the car had COVID or not. They didn't question that, they still did what they had to do to serve our community. And I think it's fair, and I think it's the right thing to do, to make sure that they're compensated for that. We obviously, you know, we appreciate the work, but I think it goes beyond that. These people certainly put their own families at risk in the call of their duty, and I think that, that we should certainly recognize that. And I know that Shay and Roger, I think you, does Roger need abstain since he's this son's a immediate family member?
None.
It's only if he personally would profit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Unless, unless he pays you rent.
I'll put my disclaimer in here, that I will not personally benefit from this.
Sure. So what I'm asking for basically is that we allocate, we're getting roughly two point three, three million dollars. I'm asking that we allocate seventy-five thousand dollars to the Mills River Fire Department for premium pay, retroactive premium pay for, under the ARPA guidelines.
Question.
Sure.
You said, I'm all for this. Does this go in the general fund of the fire department for, for premium pay? Or does it go into, into the fire department's special account?
So my understanding, and Daniel can correct me, is that when you release ARPA funds for specific purposes, there is a laundry list of documents that have to be signed, and they have to allocate how they're going to use that money, as well as they, the town is responsible for how they spend that money. So there is some reporting that they have to do on the back end, so that lets us know how that gets spent. So there'll be, there'll essentially be a contract, Roger, when, between the town and the fire department, when the time is right, we have to draw all that stuff up, but that's how it would work.
And the fire department should treat it as a grant.
Okay. So having what I said, a man to go, since my son is a part-time fireman, paid fireman, with the town of Mills River, I respectfully like to reclusive myself. Does that make sense? Sure. With, with these funds being for not only the paid department members, but volunteers also?
Correct, yes.
Majority of those people are volunteer.
That'd be something that we would require that the volunteers be included in this too.
So if, if it's council's pleasure to continue with this, what we'll need to do is, in the motion, council will have to direct staff to prepare a sub-recipient agreement, put together a couple of other documents, one's a risk assessment, and there's another one that I cannot recall off the top of my head.
We have to have a policy on sub-recipient awards.
So you would direct us to develop it such that it goes towards the fire department's paid and volunteer personnel, and then that's what the sub-recipient agreement would reflect, and.
Before we get to that point, I'd still would like to reclusive myself, because my son could potentially benefit.
So I think council has to vote to excuse.
So is it, is it, personally, I would not benefit.
Right.
But, but I just want to make sure that while, you know, is it, it's better off to be sure than come back to batching the tail later on.
I'll make a motion to excuse Roger and myself from voting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I seconded the motion.
Uh, Daniel, does this raise any complications in terms of who could receive ARP money on, on behalf of the fire department? Is it, I know there are certain, for instance, people on our staff here, we couldn't have done the ARP, use ARP money as bonuses, because anybody who worked remotely would not have qualified.
That's right.
So are there any pickups with this that might exclude anyone that, that you're aware of?
If the fire, I don't know the fire department's operations, but if there's a administrative assistant, for example, who's been working remotely, then that person would not qualify. But if they're in the office, even though they might not be out in the field, they're interacting daily with the folks who are out in the field, and therefore, they would qualify for that, that bonus. Does that answer your question?
So I want to make the motion.
So I would make the, I'd like to make the motion that we allocate seventy-five thousand dollars to the Mills River Fire Department from the ARPA funds, and that we give the staff the, for volunteers and paid personnel who are essential frontline workers, and that we authorize staff to prepare the necessary of agreements under the ARPA guidelines.
I still call for the vote, right? I still call for the vote. I'm not discussing your voting, but I can still.
She can still, we got a second.
For the vote, we need a second.
You have an excuse.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll second.
Yes.
Okay. Randy second. So there's a motion and a second. All, those of you voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have to have a motion to get back in? So just that one, okay. All right, item J, the dependent care.
J.
Yeah, I said, we got a few more. One's Brian Caskins.
So, one of the things that Carl Shaw demonstrated to us tonight is that the town outperformed our budget last year by six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That means we made more money than we had budgeted for, and so we have a surplus of six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. One of the things that we discussed last year, and this was in the middle of the pandemic, Councilman Kimball was new to the board, so it goes back about a year and a half, but we, we discussed frequently, I think for about seven meetings straight, the concept of providing dependent care coverage to the town's employees. I, I think with the, the kind of ever improving financial situation that the town of Mills River finds itself in, it is appropriate and proper that we offer independent care coverage at a rate of seventy-five percent to the town's employees. And I wanted to throw it over to Daniel for just a second, because I had asked Daniel to look at the numbers, compare our cost premiums, and I wanted him to give a sort of a, an overview of what the impact would be on the bottom line.
Sure. So we, the, the town has insurance coverage through Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina, and each year, we have to renew that, obviously, and with this year's renewal rates, the, excuse me, the bottom line impact of the budget would be sixteen thousand dollars. Excuse me. To get us through the end of the fiscal year, and then at the end of the fiscal year, we, we need to review the rates, and as a percentage, it would, it would, you know, it would reflect the, any change in the premiums. But again, the bottom line impact of this year's budget would be sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
I've always been in favor of this, and I think with today's employment market and retaining, hiring and retaining good people, I think any benefit in, we need, we can certainly afford it, and I think we need to offer it.
I think just to, just to piggyback off that a little bit, Anderson County is having some trouble hiring folks right now, and I think they have about ninety open positions, and, and just yesterday, the, the commissioners authorized across the board increases, as well as additional increases for frontline employees and those departments that have suffered turnover during the pandemic. City of Hendersonville's offering signing on, sign boat, signing sign-on bonuses for new employees, so it's, I think this is, this is not unique, this is a good effort to, to maintain current employees and attract future employees.
Quick question, Daniel, if I can, would employees be able to enroll in this before June?
Yes, there, there has to be a qualifying event, which if someone has a spouse who does not have coverage, they could, of course, enroll, because they don't have coverage anywhere else. If there's a spouse that has coverage through another employer, and there goes to renew that, they can opt to not renew it with that employer, and could come onto the town's plan. Of course, a birth, a death, anything like that are all qualifying events. Marriage, yes, thank you, marriage and divorce.
So without naming names, how many people, how many employees, I mean, full-time employees, would this affect? Second question is this. The employees that are dependents already have insurance, what are we going to do for them if we adopt this?
The first question, there are two employees right now that potentially take advantage of this, if it was, if it was covered, or excuse me, if it was passed. The second question was if other folks' dependents have any coverage, they would have the option to stay on their existing coverage, and they could come over to the town's plan if they have any of those qualifying life events, birth, death, marriage, loss of coverage, something like that, loss of the job.
But they wouldn't give up their paid coverage through their job to pay twenty-five percent to be on our plan?
I would assume.
Most likely, yeah.
Not very logical, yeah.
And some of the staff members that I've spoken to have indicated to me that they would, would not take advantage of this, but they would consider it a safety net if their spouse lost, lost their job. So I think this is, I think this is a no-brainer for us. If there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and hold question.
So you mentioned the safety net. So if Roger was an employee and his wife was already covered, is that she could decide, well, is that, she's a state employee, so she could decide which plan worked for her. So as a state employee, she doesn't pay anything.
So she wouldn't jump to yours and pay twenty-five percent? So then she wouldn't, she wouldn't drop her free coverage and drop, and pay twenty-five percent to be on your coverage?
Well, that's my question. Is that Brian just mentioned a safety net. So if for some reason down the road that the state said, we're kicking everybody off.
Yes.
So then. So then. Gail. Now you, Gail. It's a, well, Roger, sign me up. For the town's thing. So. My point is this. If there's really only two employees roughly. Not.
Today.
Theoretically. Is that? We really don't know how, what the cost is going to be. Tomorrow. Plus down the road. Is that fair, Daniel? I mean, is that is that you could have? Three employees sign up tomorrow. But next week you could have six. Theoretically.
I suppose in in. In theory of a world, yes, that 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 could happen, although I would say the likelihood is very, very low. Because again, we, someone would have to have a qualifying life event to bring someone onto the plan.
So I think. Go ahead. Um, last time we talked about this, obviously, uh, we were headed into the pandemic. And as Carl Shaw just said, we were getting all these projections from the state and from everybody about how there was going to be a budget shortfall. At that time that I voted no, I said, the reason why I was voting no was because we were heading into a budget, a potential budget shortfall. And we had no clue what that impact was going to be. So it wasn't the right time. Since we went through the pandemic, a lot of things have changed. One, we have a six hundred thousand dollar surplus, so. We don't have a shortfall of money. Second. Through the pandemic, roughly twenty five million people left the workforce. Okay. Sixty percent of that twenty five million have went back to work. So that means forty percent have not went back to work. They're estimating that by June of next year, only half of those will even return. So we're going to have a shortage of workers to begin with. Henderson County has ninety job openings right now. Just this week, they passed a four percent pay raise, which is what Daniel was led to. They passed another four percent for like their code and or for their building inspection department because they have such a shortage. On top of that. The city of Hendersonville just passed this year a ten percent pay raise across the board to all their employees. They improved their employee benefits. They provided a higher level of dependent care. They're doing paid leave now. They're doing life insurance. If you hire onto the city, you get a forty five, forty five hundred dollar signing bonus. The point is, is that in every agency or every governmental entity around us already offers dependent care. The thing is, is that. It's our responsibility. To protect our employees because that is the most important asset that we have in this town. The park doesn't operate without employees. This town does not operate without employees. When the citizens of Mills River need the service, they rely on the employees. In the next five years, we potentially have twenty five percent staff loss due to retirement. That means that you got to go hire people. If the county, which offers better benefits and better wages than we do, has ninety job openings. How are we even going to compete? If we don't get on board. We're already behind the eight ball. The county is already way out in front of us. The city is way out in front of us. If we don't get on board and start taking a step in the right direction. We're going to be, we're doing a disservice, not only to staff, but we're doing a huge disservice to the citizens who expect to have a certain level of performance among them. And that's where I'm at with it.
I agree, and I'll I'll remind council that, uh. In addition to outperforming the budget by six hundred and seventy one thousand dollars this year, that's six hundred and seventy one thousand dollars extra money we didn't think we'd have. We outperformed the budget by over seven hundred thousand dollars last year. We have the highest fund balance we've ever had in this town, five point two million dollars. It's right here, black and white. There's, there's absolutely no reason for us to deny this service to our employees.
At fifteen thousand dollars.
Since this is a long range thing.
No, I'm gonna call.
I'm all about the employees. I really am. But. Since this is a long range thing. And since this come up, it's last minute. I need to think about this.
If you're all about employees, let's find out. I call the vote.
Yes, let's call the question.
Go.
So I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion that the town adopt dependent care employee for the town's employees. Under the terms discussed tonight. And I'd authorize Daniel to sign any paperwork necessary.
I'll second. All those in favor of dependent care coverage, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving along. To item K. The picnic shelter capital fund project.
Yeah, so, um. As we've done with capital projects in the past, I was thinking it might be a good idea for us to. Go ahead and take that, um, the five hundred thousand dollar estimate that we've already put out the bid. And create a capital fund project. Or capital fund account rather for that project. So.
And just for clear, this doesn't, this this didn't approve the project. We're just saying we're going to set five hundred thousand dollars.
That's right, just like we did with the baseball field, yeah.
Just because we set it aside doesn't mean that we have to spend it. Is that correct?
Okay.
Oh, you make the motion? Uh, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and set up that capital fund. For the picnic shelter, amount of five hundred thousand dollars. I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, so that gets all of our letters tonight. All right, two staff updates. When you are ready, Sue, we have. You up first?
One second.
Take your time.
Okay, um. I don't have much, just, um. December ninth is the organizational meeting and. The, there will be a reception for outgoing members and incoming members immediately following, just a quick thing, you're welcome to invite whomever. It give, it's an opportunity for people to say thank you, and it's been put on the website and advertised to the public.
Thank you, Sue. To Arlie, tax collector report.
At the end of October, um. Our tax collections were running a little bit behind the year before, but as Carl mentioned, the year before, our tax collections were just through the roof. At at this time. Um, so I'm not terribly worried. We have a lot of big companies that have not paid this year yet that paid early last year. Um, but but to that note, I want to show. My newest tool in my toolbox of tax collections.
Turn that into a sandwich board and walk around.
We had, um, we had fifty of these printed up. I was on vacation this year and driving through Damascus, Virginia, saw a sign. Said Damascus property taxes due November twentieth. And my first thought was November twentieth, what a weird date that is. And my second thought was, oh. We could do this in Mills River. So, um, got permission from Daniel, had them printed up. And they will be appearing on our local streets Monday afternoon. So if you get phone calls, um, that's why. I hope you guys don't get the phone calls. I'm expecting we will get quite a few. Um, a lot of people in past years have said, you know, you get the bill in August, we don't get a reminder, we forget about it, we put it in a drawer. So hopefully these going out at the end of November will help people think about us.
You're gonna put a sign per million for that?
I checked on that, and since they're going to be in the D O T right of way, apparently we don't need one, number one, and number two, because we're a government entity. Um, we don't need it either. But yeah.
Thank you for checking.
I did check.
Thank you, Arlie. And Nicole, Parks Trails Recreation Director.
Well, that's good. Do I have to get my business card reprinted? Um, just real quick, um, we had our first free produce market last month, which was very successful, and we just love help. Um, it's going to be a monthly thing here that we're partnering with the Y M C A, and there's no questions asked. They come, they set up a little free produce market. People can come and shop. Um, for no cost, no questions, which is just a really great opportunity. We saw a lot of, um. You know, moms come after school and bring their kids, and they grab their banana for snack, and then they go get their physical activity on the playground. So it's. Um, I think has the potential to be a really great partnership to bring healthy foods and and healthy activity to the community. So our next produce market will be December seventh between three and four P M, right down by the picnic shelter. Um, and other than that, just everybody save the date, December eleventh, we have confirmed that Santa Claus is coming to Mills River. So we will have our fire truck tour, um, tour around Mills River. People want to check out the route, um, go to mill river dot org slash Santa. And it's got all the approximate times, um, going to the neighborhood. So we're looking forward to that again this year.
That's it. Thank you, Nicole. And to zoning, Michael.
Um, I've been working with the engineers for the Coney Bell Tiny Home Park over the last month or so, um, for their phase three build out, and I issued that approval today. Um, as was mentioned previously in the meeting, we did receive a variance request for lot thirty four of the farm at Mills River to vary from the town's front yard setback requirement. So that should be going before the Board of Adjustment at their December meeting. Uh, just yesterday, I received a major residential subdivision application from Morris and Sons for a thirty two lot subdivision on Banner Farm Road. This would be just across from the eight lot subdivision, uh, that went before this board a couple of months ago. The approximate address is two oh two Banner Farm Road, if anyone wants to look it up on Google. So I'll begin staff review, and then that will go before the planning board at a later date. Uh, Mills River Fires approval was formally issued, and they've started site work. Um, and then one update at the November second planning board meeting, they initiated a text amendment of their own. To add public notice requirements for major subdivisions, um, and basically directed staff to begin drafting that to present to them. So just wanted to make you aware, but that should be coming to council probably early next year. That's it.
Michael, is this the technical correction? Is that? Okay, sorry, no, no, okay, we didn't discuss this specifically. All right, and Daniel, town manager.
Thank you, Senator Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. First of all, the town launched a new website last week, which we're very pleased with. It seems to be working well. We've got. Uh, several dozen folks already signed up for it. If you haven't already, got a Mills River dot org. And you can, the upper right hand corner, there's a little sign in button, and you can sign up and set alerts if you want to get a text message or an email. When an agenda is posted, or if there is a an event added to the calendar, there's a number of different things you can sign up for. Um, a quick plug for Henderson County, they are working on their twenty forty five comprehensive plan. If you've not already completed that survey, please do that. It's Henderson County twenty forty five dot com. Um, they they mentioned that they've had a lot of the demographic above the age of sixty five, uh, complete that survey, which is a good thing. Uh, but they also need to try to get some younger folks involved as well. So please spread the word on that. Uh, the bike and pedestrian planning committee is meeting a week from Monday for their first meeting. And the airport, Nashville Airport is has just kicked off their master planning process. Last one was done in two thousand and eleven, I believe. Um, yesterday I attended an informational session about that. Uh, it'll be taking place over the next eighteen months or so, and it will be opportunities for for general public input. Uh, so we'll keep you posted on that. Um, and then I just wanted to thank, uh, the three council members who are going to be stepping down on in December ninth. I know we still have one more meeting. Uh, but this is the last full meeting, if you will, with you all. So I just wanted to thank all of you for your service to the community. Uh, your support of me and the staff. Uh, there's been a lot happening the last couple of years. Um, it would be a challenge for for anyone to take on. So the fact that you all stuck it out, uh, I think speaks volumes to your commitment to the community, and I appreciate that. I've enjoyed working with all of you. And I'm looking forward to working with the next group of folks. So thank you again.
Thank you, Daniel. All right, council comments?
Yes, I have a counter comment. Uh, this will likely be the last opportunity that I have to address the people of Mills River as their councilman. I wanted to take a moment and thank them for allowing me to spend the last four years working on their behalf. It has been a great privilege. I also wanted to thank the staff and the members of our volunteer committees who work, who work so hard on behalf of our town. None of the tremendous progress that we have made over the last four years would have been possible. Without the good people who spend their days and many evenings here at Town Hall. I feel like I would be negligent in my responsibilities, however, if I did not issue a warning to the newly elected members of council. Before they assume their duties at the first town council meeting in December. I will explain. When I was elected to council four years ago, among the many phone calls of congratulations were no less than five calls from friends who work in real estate in western North Carolina. The tone of those phone calls was different than any of the other calls that I received. Because the basic question that each person asked me was, why on earth would you want to serve on that dirty board? When I asked what they meant, I was told that a widely known fact was that ever since the town was founded. A well-placed envelope or bag of cash delivered to the right elected official would get any rezoning or development project approved in Mills River. The name of one elected official in Mills River repeatedly came up. This was all hearsay, of course, but I have kept my eyes open over the last four years. And then, just a few weeks ago, I was approached by an out of town developer who wanted my help avoiding our new architectural standards. He said, this is the way it's always worked in Mills River. I call my councilman and we help each other out. I told him I wasn't his councilman and that he needed to go through the process of filing for a variance. In other words, go fish. The same day, I notified town staff of the situation, and I also notified each member of council, except for the one member that I mentioned previously. Over the last few days and weeks, I have watched with great interest as this elected official has aggressively tried to find a way to help this very same developer. Is that a coincidence? I think you'd have to be a fool to think that it is. So our new council members should be aware that Mills River's reputation by those inside and outside our community. Is one that involves corruption and graft on the part of elected officials. I can now say that reputation is most likely well earned. The last four years have been spent creating a new reputation. One of industry and commerce and sustainability of respect and honesty. I urge you. To continue to ride the tide of progress because the alternative is the destruction of our community. By those who choose to sell out their neighbors for a piece, few pieces of silver. With your every action, remember that the identity and the very future of Mills River is at stake. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Brian. Um, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Those in favor?
Will you second?
Second.
All right.